We don't stand well.
Welcome to this forum for the Ferndale City Election. Today is October 3, 2011. This forum will be featuring the two candidates who have filed for mayor for the two-year term, and the three candidates who have filed for city council seats for a four-year term. The sponsor of today's forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Cheryl Mitchell, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted national nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. We will never endorse a candidate. We are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. A League of Women Voters member, as a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has a great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight, or visit the website at L W V O A dot org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum, and please turn off all cellphones. We ask that candidates answer the question with their views only, and not interrupt another candidate. The candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience, and screened for duplication and appropriateness by John McGary. Judy Bateman will be circulating with paper and pencils for your questions. Please turn your questions into Judy. The format is as follows. All candidates will be given two minutes for an opening statement, in alphabetical order, by office. Closing statements will be one minute in reverse. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question, and in rotation unless extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Our timer is Laura Gagola. The candidates for mayor are David Coulter, Raymond Willis. Candidates for city council are Michael Lennon, Dan Martin, and Sherri Wells. We will now begin the two-minute opening statements with David Coulter.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Dave Coulter. I'm the mayor of Ferndale. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. A couple other groups I'd like to thank. I would like to thank the voters of Ferndale. They first supported me back in 2002, when I ran for Oakland County Commissioner, and the voters here have been kind enough to support me four other times since then, as county commissioner in the race last year, and hopefully this November. I want you to know that I take the votes that you've given me as a great responsibility, and I take this job seriously every single day. I also want to thank my colleagues on city council. They're the ones that appointed me mayor in January. And I think that we have a team now in place on city council that works very effectively together, works for the best interests of the city. It's not like some communities where you see a lot of bickering and fighting on council. We have a council that independent-minded people, that all have their own opinions, but at the end of the day, I think we're very well together as a team for our community, and I'm proud of that. I'm running for mayor because I think we still have a lot to do. We're in the worst economic times of our lifetime, and I think that we're in the process of putting together a foundation to build for success in the future, primarily financially, putting in a financial plan in place that will ensure that Ferndale can continue to be a successful and thriving city with outstanding city services. And I think there's still work to do, and if the voters are kind enough, I'd like to continue that work for the next two years. Thank you very much.
Raymond Willis.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Raymond Willis. I'm obviously new to this arena. I've been the independent contractor incorporated in construction for the last 15 years. I recently became semi-retired and have been interested in local politics since my years at Grand Valley, where I studied history and political science. Wanted to become involved in politics for personal reasons. I am very happy with what I see as far as the council and the way the city is run. I don't have a personal agenda. I want it to become learned in this area. Have a very experienced opponent. I think that more people from the general populace should get involved in politics. I have the times to do this, and I'm obviously learning a lot as I go along. Been involved with residents and working for them all over the state. I worked out of Grand Rapids for quite a few years, and I've also been all over the metropolitan area, working directly with people. I work as a troubleshooter for some of the largest construction companies in Michigan. I'm the person that they would send out when there was problems with their other contractors. I like to solve problems, work with people to figure out what they need, and of course, when the job's done, to get the money. I think that the government should treat the residents more as customers, and I want to bring that business attitude to the city, make hopefully the position a little bit more open to the general populace. People could come directly to me with their problems, and we could work out together, maybe at an open marriage meeting once a week if that's where we're going to go. Thank you very much.
Michael Lennon.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League, like to thank the people in the audience and the people watching today. First, a little bit about myself. I'm 55-year-old lifelong resident. I lived here, I raised two kids here, Ryan, I assisted in raising two kids here, Ryan 26, and Tara soon to be 25. I am serving, I am seeking my third term on council. The voters have put their confidence in me the last two terms, and I hope that continues over. I concur with the mayor, these have been troubling times the last four years. Our first four years were really nice, really good. We always get some things accomplished, but things went south real quick. And fortunately, I think council has a good foundation right now. We were able to balance the budget for the next two years while cutting $2 million from our coffers. So we need to continue on with that practice. Sound fiscal responsibility is needed in the upcoming years, and I'd like to see that through. I currently employed by a Ferndale-based company, a little one, you might have heard of it, Garden Fresh Salza. And so my roots, I can't get out of this city for some reason. I worked here for 25 years, and now I'm working in town here again. So I'm here to stay, and I seek your confidence for the next term. Thank you.
Dan Martin.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League as well, and everyone who's attending here tonight. My name is Dan Martin, and I'm running for city council because I believe in what this city has been, what it is today, and what it will be in the future. I think residents and business owners deserve a voice on council, who will listen to them and work collaboratively with them to keep Ferndale on the progressive path while recognizing that these are difficult economic times, and that everyone, including the city, has been working over the last several years to overcome. If elected, my priorities are going to be to support sound fiscal policies that ensure positive and appropriate use of tax revenue. I'll support and strengthen Ferndale's neighborhoods. I'll ensure protection of our city through adequate police, fire, and city services. I'll promote progressive and diverse culture that Ferndale has become known for, and why in part I love the city very much. We'll increase responsible environmental stewardship and ensure business retention, and encourage responsible economic development. I believe on the right candidate who can accomplish this, based on my experience, among other things, the nonprofit community in Ferndale specifically, as chair of the Ferndale Community Foundation, which has served this community by funding projects that enhance the quality of life of the city. I currently sit on numerous boards for the city and other nonprofits, including Ferndale's Police and Fire Board. I've also been an active volunteer for various Ferndale organizations, including Fern Care, Ferndale Pride, the Blues Festival, the DDA, and others. I'm also an active member of St. John's Episcopal Church, and I have the academic and professional background to hit the ground running to tackle Ferndale's challenges and ensuring its future success. I have the ability and commitment to move Ferndale forward. I'm looking forward to constructive discussion tonight, after which, I would be pleased if you join me in putting Ferndale first and voting for me on November 8. Thank you.
Sherri Wells.
Good evening. I've been going door-to-door recently and finding that because of the cable TV, which people will be watching this on, too, I understand, people do know who I am, but also because of the amount of volunteer work that I have done in this community and continue to do. I've been here for only 23 years. My daughter says she's been here her whole life, which is 20. I've been a business owner for 33 years. Self-employment, which gives people the flexibility to probably do a little too much volunteering, but it's very hard to resist, especially in this community. I've lived in other places before, but this one, I don't know whether I've adopted it or it's adapted me, but it's been a wonderful mutual experience. I was on the Charter Revision Commission. In fact, I was the person who wound up being the leader for getting that going, and chaired it for two years. We had a team, and worked very well together to come up with two proposals in that three-year period. During that time, I would go home every evening after a meeting and spend at least a couple hours pulling it all together, so that we didn't have to pay the attorney to drive down from Flint to be at our meetings. So I have been concerned about fiscal responsibility all along, not just personally, as we all are, but also for how I'm spending other people's money. I was accessible to people. They contacted me freely when I was on the charter, and I expect to be just as accessible now, and responsive to people's concerns, whatever they may be, to look into those answers. Also, we need to look for new sources and new solutions to help the financial situation here. And it is my hope that when Mr. Coulter and his piano go up to the Michigan Conference, that they come back with some new ones that we can try. I've been a lawyer for 33 years, and that has stood me in good stead also. Thank you.
We will now begin the question segment of our forum. Most questions will have a one-minute limit. We will begin with David Coulter. Do you think our downtown is too noisy? Do you favor a non-motorized downtown to reduce traffic congestion and increase pedestrian bike traffic?
When I moved to Ferndale 20 years ago, downtown wasn't noisy at all. And so what I like to say, you could park anywhere you wanted, and what I like to say is the problems that we have now, the noise, the crowded parking, those are good problems to have. Those are better problems to have than we had 20 years ago, when you could shoot a cannon through downtown. But yes, I am sensitive to the fact that we have to balance our desire for a successful and vibrant downtown with the neighbors who live there and the rest of the community. So it's a balancing act, and I think that on council, we've tried to find that balance, and I think we did that successfully with the noise ordinance. I'm not, by the way, the second part of your question, I don't know about a non-motorized, totally non-motorized downtown, but I do encourage Ferndale to be as pedestrian-friendly as it can be, and we were just ranked the second most walkable city in the state. I was very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Willis.
Yes.
Same.
Oh, same question.
Yes.
I go downtown quite a bit during the day. Work weekends at night. I'm not so much into going to the clubs that are offered here in town. So as far as the noise that's going on downtown during the night, I really can't say much about that, since I'm not there. I live across the street from the railroad tracks. When I bought my house, I realized that I was mine house across the street from Gage Products and from the railroad tracks, so I know that if they put high-speed trains in, complaining won't do any good for me, because I know it was there when I moved in, and although it was fine when I moved in, it's getting to be a little busier, which is good. I used a bike with a rickshaw to do a lot of my campaigning, and I found that, yes, bicycling is the greatest way to go as far as getting around town here, but I think that we should keep the downtown both motorized and pedestrian.
Michael Lennon.
Yeah, I have seen a rejuvenation of downtown throughout the years, and like both my other colleagues said, it's a good thing, what's going on right now. The balance between the neighborhoods and the business owners, we've achieved, I think, a happy medium on that right now, and if the problem persists, then, well, then we'll have to go back and we study the ordinance that we had drafted, and I think we did it on a one-year trial basis from the start. However, for a non-motorized downtown, that's kind of a vague question. Are we talking the elimination of cars? Are we allowing scooters, mopeds, whatever? And then we're going to have to, I would like to consult the business owners on that, and see what they think about that, and, I mean, there's a lot to be done with something of that nature. And you're basically turning something into an outside mall if you have a non-motorized, if you're doing with no cars, and that costs money, and you know where I'm at with that. Thank you.
Dan Martin.
I think a vibrant and engaging downtown is really critical for the long-term success of Ferndale. Having a downtown destination is part of the reason why people come to Ferndale. That's why people move to Ferndale as well, to be close to that. That being said, I've had meet-and-greets with residents around the area, and we do have to balance concerns, and parking, and noise, and all the issues that come with an active downtown is part of what comes to that. We have to collaborate both with businesses and residents to find a solution that works, but there's no going back. There's no going back to the days where the downtown is empty, because it's just not good for Ferndale. It's not where we're going, and we need to, again, bring residents and businesses together to help resolve that. As far as the non-motorized question, I don't ever see turning Nine Mile into a non-motorized zone by any means, but I am all for a walkable community. That's another characteristic that people really like about Ferndale, and it's what people want to move to Ferndale for, and we need to keep those attractions in place, so we continue to grow and progress and thrive.
Sherri Wells.
Yes. Our downtown used to be very active and vital. It was no fault of what the stores, the stores that were there. It was that automobile that led people to go out into the suburbs, the shopping malls, where people don't have to pay for parking, they can walk to a number of stores. And that is why the Downtown Development Authority concept was created, to help bring back the downtowns, and ours has done, on the whole, a very good job of doing that. But a lot of people miss the kind of downtown element that brings the families who live here into that downtown, and we need to focus on getting some of those types of things in, so that the people who used to walk down to their downtown can walk to their downtown again. I do walk around a lot of downtown. For the most part, it isn't noisy. Most of our businesses are very good neighbors. There are a couple of exceptions. Vibrant relates to vibrating, and that can be a concern, but balance is the key word.
The next question, we will start with Raymond Willis, and the question is in regards to the chicken ordinance, to maintain a limited number of poultry on your property. Are you in favor of the chicken ordinance, and why, and what are some of the pros and cons?
Personally, I would like to have chickens. I think that would be kind of neat. I live on a triple lot. I have a large garden. I grow fruit trees and grapes, and I think that it would be wonderful to have a few chickens. It would be great for my children. It would be great to show them how that works. I've actually considered looking into the ordinance to find out how to build a henhouse. But once again, I live in a very far edge of the city. I don't have any neighbors that are going to be affected by this, and I've also spent a lot of time in the countryside, and working on farms and that, and I know that there's certain things that should be in farms, and certain things that should be in the city. But from what I've seen and what I've heard, I think, once again, it would be a wonderful experience for my kids to have chickens, and I know that dogs and cats can make a lot more noise, and I'm not a dog person, so.
Thank you. Dan Martin.
Well, I got to, is that right?
Well, actually, it wasn't. I'm sorry. Michael Lennon.
Okay. Chicken ordinance. At first, I wasn't very receptive to the idea. However, after reviewing the ordinance, it is well-written, well-crafted. It requires a certain kind of henhouse. Clownliness is going to be an issue. Complaints are going to be an issue. So it's going to depend on the individual up to keep up the property and maintain it, so it's not an eyesore. I'm all in favor of a one-year trial basis for that, and see how it goes. There's going to be some strict code enforcement on it, and like I said, I did see the ordinance, and I changed direction on it a little bit, so I believe that's coming to the table on the next council meeting, and there'll be more discussion about it. Thank you.
Dan Martin.
Thanks. Well, I got to tell you, when I thought about running for office, and somebody had told me I'd be talking about chickens, I never thought this would be such a hot topic, but it is. And neighboring communities have adopted chicken ordinances with very little impact, and have had fairly positive outcomes for that. On top of it, city employees have indicated that it would not add significant workload to adopt a chicken ordinance. I think that a chicken ordinance that is well-crafted contains appropriate controls to ensure that we don't have issues with noise, and smells, and other kind of problems that keeping animals can sometimes bring, dogs and cats included. As long as we've got the controls in place, I don't see any significant barrier to trying it out in Ferndale, and if it doesn't work, we can always go back and look at it. But I think the appropriate controls and enforcement are the key.
Mary Wells.
Sherri.
Sherri.
Yes. Mary can sing, I can't. The chicken, having chickens ties in with sustainability, and when we're all trying to find ways to run our homes, run our government, run our businesses, on a lot less now, then chicken sounds like a good idea, since we aren't going to have those noisy roosters with them. I read the chicken ordinance. It looks like it was very thoughtfully drawn up. I understand that there aren't that many chickens that many people who actually apply for having chickens, so it may not be that as big a problem as some people may fear. I did look at the chicken coops they had on display, and I want to look at that chicken ordinance again, because when I built a playhouse for my daughter, they wanted four-foot rat walls, and I don't see rat walls under the chicken coop. So I want to look at that again to make sure that that does not add to that particular problem that many of our neighborhoods do have.
David Coulter.
Yeah, like Councilman Lennon, my first reaction was, really? Chickens? This is a city. This isn't appropriate. I admit that. But I also said I'm willing to keep an open mind and do my homework on it, and I have. I talked to three other cities that are currently, have a chicken ordinance, Hazel Park, Madison Heights, and Ypsilanti, and all three of their city managers told me that it hasn't been a problem at all to run there. I talked to our police chief and our code enforcement chief, who told me they didn't think it would be an undue strain on the staff. So I learned that it's only the ones that don't make noise, so I admit I didn't know that at first, that it was only, that the chickens don't make any noise. They make a little noise, so I still want to make sure. I'm with Councilman Lennon. I would like to do a year pilot program, and at the end of the year, find out if there was a big problem with it or not, but I think I've educated myself to the point where I'm willing to try it.
Okay. The next question, we will start with Michael Lennon, and the question is, the city adopted a buy-local ordinance. Do you think this will increase or decrease the cost of city expenditures?
Well, I don't think it's going to have an adverse effect on city expenditures at all. I think it's good for the community, it's good for the business owners, and it's good for the residents. We've always encouraged buy-local, shop-local. I don't see a problem with it at all. I wouldn't want, myself, if I need something, I'm a dollar store king. I always shop-local. Unfortunately, we don't have a hardware store, but I have to venture around the city for a little bit, for a few hundred yards. But no, I think it's wonderful that we keep residents in town, and I love the diversity of shops on Nymouth, because you can get just about anything you want. So shop-local, buy-local, no, that's a good model to have, and that's not an issue, and it shouldn't be a problem.
Dan Martin.
No, I would agree. As much as we can support our local businesses and retail, it's so important. There have been studies that show if every individual resident would just pick even two local businesses that they would spend money at every month, we could increase the local economy so much more, and increase the retention of businesses. We all love Ferndale, we all care about Ferndale. That includes local businesses and residents alike. So as much as possible, where we can support local businesses, I think it's important, it's important to our identity as a community, and I don't see any problem with the ordinance at all.
Sherri Wells.
Buy-local makes sense all the way around. It also can bring more into the city coffers by the taxes that it can raise, by the people who are employed here. So that obviously is a very good idea. I buy as local as I can. I've changed to some of my shopping habits and banking habits to be local for those reasons, and a lot of the things that we do as individuals is something that the city can also do. And we're all in this mess together. But local, I think, is, yes, we need that hardware store. And there's still a few more spots, but I went to the DDA Chamber Commercial Property Showcase, so there's room for a hardware store, and there's room for some more of the things that all of us would like to go locally for. Buying local as a city also reduces transportation, the effect on the environment, and that's all good.
David Coulter.
Well, first of all, I am all in favor of buying local, and I try to do it myself as much as possible. I think there's almost nothing more important we could do together to help the economy of our community. I think this question is getting at the city's purchasing policy to buy local, and yes, there is the possibility that there could be some small additional cost to buy local, but to me, that is more than offset by the employment that happens here, the taxes that are paid here, the businesses that thrive here. So you don't pick a local business that's far more expensive. There are criteria that you use, but yes, I think when it's a closed decision, if a local business is slightly more expensive than somebody out of state, then the city ought to go with the local person to support the jobs and the businesses that are here in the community.
Raymond Willis.
I've got that one written down here in my notes. It's funny, because what's Hazel Park missing? A hardware store. Hazel Park, excuse me, Ferndale. And also, I was asked a question, what local stores do shop, and I just wrote too many to list, at a personal level. Yeah, I think that the governments of a local area should, why I'm thinking about Hazel Park, is I go to a little grocery store in Hazel Park. I do a lot of, my main shopping at Ferndale Foods, but I also go to the little grocery shop, because I work in Hazel Park. And he was saying, the owner was saying that he was complaining to the police department, because, not the police department, the fire department, and they're having barbecues, and they're getting their safe from a place in Warren. He's like, why don't you come and buy from me? I pay these taxes to you. You're my employees. And so that's how my feelings are on that.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Dan Martin. Does the city of Ferndale have a crime problem? If yes, what can you do about it? If no, what can you do about the perception of crime?
That's a great question. No, I don't believe the city of Ferndale has a crime problem. In fact, the police chief has recently reported out to city council that the crime statistics have actually gone in the opposite direction and have reduced. But we do have, however, in the last couple of years, and I'm not criticizing it, but this is a consequence of it, is more intense local, online, new, and real-time coverage. So the crimes that do occur do get more attention, do get more publicity, particularly the more egregious crimes that are out there. As a member of city council, I believe in supporting law enforcement. I believe in giving law enforcement the tools that they need to do the job, and getting out of their way, because I'm not a police officer, but I believe in hiring the right people to get the job done, and giving them the tools to get out there and do it. I have a great deal of faith in our police department, and no, while there's not a crime problem today, there is crime, and we need to continue to support our police department in moving against such activity.
Sherri Wells.
To the extent that there's any crime around, what has been happening is the citizen involvement has been increasing. The police department just awarded a citizen award for someone who saw a bicycle theft, kept his eye on it, called the police, and helped them stop that. The police department has said that they can't be everywhere, but we neighbors, we residents, business owners can be there and can help them find what's going wrong. If the, we get the block clubs increasing again, people know their neighbors, people know whether they're home, they're not home, what's unusual, that's how we can help our police keep the more common things down, the break-ins and those things. There's things we can do for prevention, lock our There's things we can do for prevention, lock our cars, lock our doors, our windows, and things, so that the police can have less that they have to do. But their response time, always, for the 23 years I've been here, has been very good, they've been very professional, but we, we can work with them and help them do an even better job.
David Coulter.
Um, you know, one violent crime is one too many, and it's a problem, but the reality, as Dan Martin said, is that, um, if you look at the trends for the last five years, our crimes have been decreasing in this city, and I, I'm happy about that. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we can't be satisfied until we reduce all crimes, and especially violent crimes, and I think we do, as Sherry mentioned, we have to be vigilant about that. I think there's a couple of things in particular that we can do. Number one, in my opinion, we did in May, which is, as much as it was a struggle for some of us, we voted for a heavily override, and the main reason I supported it is so that we didn't have to cut further in our police department. Our police protection here is an important part of what makes Ferndale work. Secondly, uh, our neighborhoods, I think we can do a better job at, you know, we used to have block clubs, uh, that were very active in town. When neighbors talk to each other, look out at, for each other's homes, I think that the eyes and ears of, of neighbors are just as important, uh, in catching crime as, as our police department, and so those two things together can help us reduce crime even further.
Raymond Willis.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's problems in Ferndale with crime, there's problems in, uh, any major, uh, interim suburb city, even if you're looking at Grand Rapids or Lansing or Detroit here. One of the biggest problems that, uh, I'm seeing is, is not so much as the bad crimes, it's just the petty theft, breaking NRAs, things disappearing from garages, uh, cars being stolen. I, um, would like to see, maybe in the future, cameras put on, uh, major streets in Ferndale like they have in Troy. It would be nice to, um, maybe bring up a reserve, uh, police force to, uh, help out the police when we have major, uh, festivals and events and weekends. I, uh, noticed today I put some steaks out next to the trees on my front lawn, and they're just simple little painted steaks, and today they're, they're gone, so there's little things that come up missing, um, around my house all the time, and what do you do? Thank you.
Michael Lennon.
Uh, yes, as Mr. Martin indicated, the chief just reported to council that there is an overall decrease in crimes, and like Mr. Martin already said, um, it gets reported faster. What happens does get reported faster due to the internet, due to the media, and there are, has been some violent crimes in the past, oh, I would say, a year in Ferndale, some street robberies and that, that I think have been, uh, sensationalized a little bit by the media. They've, we are accustomed to street crimes, they've happened, um, I have experienced a little bit of experience in that field. Um, we're not gonna get away from it, but we need to give the police department the tools to fight crime, and, uh, we've reduced their manpower, um, and therefore, um, they, they're, they're stretched pretty thin. Um, we need to bring back our community block groups, we did have an eyes and ear program here, and we did have a crime prevention program, where we had a crime prevention officer that wouldn't smoke the citizen groups. So, some, uh, tools like that, um, but it's all about resources, it's all about money, so, um, with citizen involvement's gonna be a key issue.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Sherry Wells. Do you thi, what do you think of the city council's relationship with the Ferndale Board of Education, and what can be done to improve that relationship?
I've attended hundreds of city council meetings over the past, uh, 16 years, and the city council has always tried to have a good relationship with the school board, the school district, the school district reports on a regular basis what the activities are doing. I believe there can be more, uh, cooperation between the city and the school board. Uh, each of these entities are so enmeshed in the problems that they have, that it's sometimes a little hard to reach across part of our district just to be able to, uh, say, what can we work on together? But I think there are things that we can, and I'd like to see more of it done. There's some wonderful examples that, that the city has done, the shielded lights, for example, that are, that is an example that the school district needs to look into, uh, just for something that to some people is big, to others may be small. But there's also a lot of person power in those schools that we can take advantage of, too.
Thank you. David Coulter.
I think the relationship could be better, frankly. Um, it's getting better, um, but we both have such an important stake in, in the success of each other, the city and the schools, and the schools and the city, that it's important that we do more. I'll tell you, one of the first people I met with when I became mayor in January was Gary Meyer, the superintendent of public schools, and I, I had, I had lunch with him, and we had a very good and frank conversation about what's working and what's not working. And one of the things I told him is, I'm not gonna debate you in the papers, but I wanna have a relationship with you where I can pick up the phone and call when something's not working. Uh, and I think that's the kind of relationship we're building. They send representatives to council to, to inform us on what's going on, I promised him that we'd do a better job about going to their meetings as well. I think there's some things we could work on, uh, in the future to make sure that we're both supporting the same things. But, you know, but people forget, there are things we're working on, too. Gary reminded me, we have a lease for the Kulick Center for a dollar a year from the schools. That's a great example of something that the school gives back to the community, uh, and there, there's just more things like that that I think we could do in the future.
Raymond Willis.
I think the council does a wonderful job with everything that, uh, they're endeavored with. My children, uh, because we live on the, uh, Far East Side, the other side of the railroad tracks, go to Hazel Park, um, public schools, so I'm, I know a little bit more about the Hazel Park, uh, school system. I don't know really anything about the school board, so I'm not in a position to say, uh, anything about the school board. I know that they have some wonderful programs here, Ferndale, and a wonderful system, and I always wanna congratulate the marching band for the wonderful job they did. I'll leave it at that.
Sure.
Michael Lennon.
Yes, the relationship could be better, I'll admit to that. They do come to us once a month with a brief synopsis of what's happening in the schools, but maybe we should go to one of their meetings and send a representative and tell them what's going on in, in the city. Um, as, it's funny that question is brought up, because we are working on some things right now, particularly some IT things, um, on a collaborative effort as far as websites and emails and this and that go, and it's in the infancy stages, but we are working with them, and this started with all, with our new city manager, and she jumped on that bandwagon, and she's, she's gonna ride it. Um, and so she's got our go-ahead to do this, and I mean, we need to mix some athletic and educational programs together with them, uh, too, and, and it'd be a cost-saving measure on both ends. Thank you.
Dan Martin.
Well, I, I agree, I think this is an area we could just do better at, and there's no one necessarily to blame, but I think, um, that as a city council person, we can really encourage that collaboration. I believe a lot of success develops out of good, strong relationships with different constituencies and different groups, and we share many, obviously, of the same constituencies with the Board of Education. Not that long ago, uh, the school board and city council met, and this was several years ago, in a collaborative effort, and they, they met once, and that was a nice start, but nothing really grew from that. I think that, um, the ground is fertile, if you will, to continue to grow that relationship, and I think it just requires effort, building of those relationships, and additional communication. There's a lot we can do together, and I think there's a lot we can help each other out with.
The next question will start with David Coulter. Do you think the current level of ordinance enforcement is appropriate for a city of our size, or are we overstaffed or understaffed?
Ordinance enforcement, as in code enforcement? I, I guess I'm not clear.
It says ordinance, so I'm, we can assume that's code enforcement.
Um, whoever asked the question, is that what you meant?
I didn't ask the question, I'm just wondering, what is ordinance?
I mean, ordinances are the laws by which Ferndale lives by, right? They're, they're sort of our regulations and laws, so I...
I'll call your grasses.
Well, that gets to code enforcement, so I'm guessing, let me, can I, I'll guess that it's code enforcement, and I guess the answer is, I wish we had a lot more code enforcement officers, because there are still examples of blight in our city, there are still too many places, uh, where, uh, things could be neater and cleaner and, and more according to code, but it, it gets into a resource question. Uh, our code enforcement officer and department does a great job, but they're stretched thin due to the resources that we have, and so, uh, that's another great example where if we had more active block clubs, you know, neighbors help encourage neighbors to, to, to keep up on, on their lawns and, and on their buildings, and so, uh, that would be helpful, but, uh, I think we, we've got the code enforcement we're gonna have until we have more resources to add to it.
Raymond Willis.
Uh, not quite clear, but it seems to me that they have lost, um, a few code enforcement people in recent history, and from what I've seen from when I first moved here to what's going on now, that there's, yes, a need for, uh, more money to be spent on code enforcement. I personally would like to see, um, maybe a little bit more attention put at rental units and also, uh, houses that are vacant. Um, there's, in my area of Ferndale, there's probably about 20% vacancy, either between houses that are, uh, being renovated, being waited to be rented, or being waited to be sold, and, um, there's, uh, a lot of overgrowth, and it's just one of those things where they can't come in and say, you know, this, this, and this. And, uh, some of the other cities I've been at, they actually walk the streets and pass out tickets to people, uh, you know, tell them warnings to, to clean this up, and I'd like to maybe see a little bit more of that.
Michael Lennon.
Um, like the mayor said, yes, I'd love more code enforcement, and they are stretched awfully thin, and I believe a couple of them, we have two full-time and one part-time. Um, so, and, and in between that, they're doing housing inspections and building inspections, and it's really difficult for them, and they are swamped in there, but I tell you what, I have called them a couple times, and they've gotten right out on the problem. They'll handle it, but a lot of their time is spent in the office on the follow-up paperwork or court testifying. So, we need more resources, we need some more CBDG, uh, funding for them, uh, to bring on another full-time officer to just concentrate on the blighted residences and the buildings, but that boils down to the landlords and business owners. Um, I wish they would be more responsible, it would make our job a lot easier, but it's not, and so, yeah, more code enforcement's needed, but we're stuck with code enforcement right now. Thank you.
Dan Martin.
Well, I agree with what's been said, code enforcement and increased code enforcement, I think, is important. When we talk about positioning ourselves to be at the edge of this economic recovery when we finally get out of these difficult times, uh, it's about strong neighborhoods, and yes, strong neighborhoods mean, and I've been talking about, uh, block clubs and neighborhood associations just since I started running, but it also means holding your neighbors accountable to each other, and that comes from getting to know your neighbors better as well as code enforcement. There's a number of different ways we can help improve people's compliance with the codes and enforcement. So yes, we need more code, uh, code enforcement, addressing blight, it's only going to make neighborhoods stronger, it's gonna help property values recover, and we need to hold people who own that property accountable, the landlords and the business owners and everybody else, we're all neighbors here, and we need to be accountable to each other.
Sherry Wells.
Many years ago, we had a Ferndale Block Club Network that some of you can remember, and I was very active in that for a couple of years until it folded, uh, but my block is still quite active. Recently, I have two new neighbors, and one of the things that I realized is they don't know what the rules are, and so I've been informing them, and I thought what we really need is a piece of paper or a few pages of a welcome to new residents to say, this is when your trash can go out, this is when the empty trash cans can have to be removed, this is, uh, the length of grass, and all of the other things, whichever things the code enforcement people find themselves dealing with most, and maybe a little reminder to the people who've been here for a while, too. But the block clubs, the, the neighbors getting to know each other, knowing who's ill, who can't mow their own lawn, um, is something that can, can take care of it. My, my best memory is having one neighbor on the right and one on the left with their snow blowers meeting in the middle in front of my house. That's Ferndale.
Thank you. The next question will start with Raymond Willis. Can you name two decisions the previous council has spent money on that you wish they hadn't?
I, you have me with this one. I, I've been, uh, you know, filing council, like I've said before, I agree with everything that, uh, has been going on with the city. There's been a lot of complaining about, uh, signs, uh, that were recently placed, uh, about the, uh, new fire truck and, um, police vehicle purchases, and these in my mind make sense. Uh, we need these things, and, so no, I, I guess I can't complain about anything.
Michael Lennon.
Well, uh...
I'm a bit uncalled.
Yeah, if you're talking about what council voted on, as a majority, they voted on a parking study, which I had indicated that the judge, the firm's gonna come back and tell us we need more parking, and that's exactly what he did. So we wasted money there. As a majority, council voted for that parking study. As a majority, they voted for the thing at, uh, the toll and pull at Camp Warner Woodward. As a majority, there was a couple other consultants hired under a different regime that the majority voted for, um, that voted either three to two or four to one. Um, I am not in favor of hiring consultants, um, at this point in time. If the coffers were overflowing, um, it would make our job easier, it'd make staff jobs easier, but no, um, there have been some decisions council, as council has made, that I have not agreed with, yes.
Dan Martin.
You know, I, I appreciate the intent of the question, but truth of the matter is, I'm not running an election to, you know, run against a cause or against decisions that council has previously made, so, um, you know, I, I'm running because I believe I am the candidate that can help make responsible financial decisions going forward. I have not always agreed with every financial decision that council has made, but I'm not gonna sit here and nitpick them either. Um, in broad categories, I think that some of the consultant spending, some of the study spending, I would not have agreed 100% with. Um, but I believe that, uh, the important, uh, thing to look forward to is how we're spending money in the future and evaluating that when we make these expenditures, does it make sense? Are we getting the bang for the buck and learning from that, and making the right financial expenditure decisions in the future? And that's what I'm about in running for the seat. Thank you.
Sherry Wells.
Yes, uh, it was a relatively small amount, as amounts go, but council member Lennon and I agreed that we didn't need to have a noise consultant. Uh, what we wound up with, I think, is probably no better than our own noise ordinance, our, our ordinance committee had proposed a year before, uh, and I'm still not sure what the noise consultants came up with. I understand it's a good company, uh, that they've done some good work in our community, uh, but the consultant stuff, and we have so much wisdom in our own departments, and we have hired some very, very good people recently, uh, I think that will have the consultant issue not be as it was.
David Coulter.
Um, you know, when you have a budget of $17 million, it's easy to find $1,000 here or there that you disagree with, and I could probably go back and find something, but I think it misses the bigger point, which is that this council and the previous council has cut, as Mike Lennon said, over $2 million out of a $17 million budget over the last two years. There's no more low-hanging fruit, there's no more obvious things that we can cut. We've cut people's wages and benefits, and there's nothing more serious that you can do, uh, and that you take seriously as, as to do that, and so I don't view this council as being particularly wasteful. There may be, like I said, $1,000 here or there, but in the grand scheme of things, I think that this council has done a pretty responsible job of trimming the budget significantly without interrupting services to residents, so, um, I, I think they've done a pretty good job.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Michael Lennon. Recently, cities and towns across the country have been partnering with businesses to sell advertising on government property for additional revenue. Do you support this and why?
Well, um, during these times, we have to be innovative and come up with new ways to raise revenue. Um, it's funny, this is mentioned also, but I just had a meeting with the city manager, and we're talking about selling, uh, signs on some of the, um, outfield walls of our, our baseball diamonds, um, uh, so to generate revenue to help pay for the programs, the softball programs and the T-ball programs. Um, yes, I do believe in, I, I do believe in selling, um, uh, space for advertising, but I do want it to go too far where you walk into, um, Garden Fresh City Hall. You know, I, I, okay? So I don't wanna, you know, or, you know, um, Dollar Store Library. I, I don't believe in that, but, yeah, do we need to sell some? Sure. Um, I, I think it's an innovative and a, and a creative way to raise revenue to a certain extent, so guidelines have to be, uh, in place.
Thank you. Dan Martin.
You know, it's an interesting concept, and I'm certainly open to pursuing it and potentially could be supportive of it. We do have to be innovative and think outside of the box, and this may very well be one of those ideas that makes sense. I would encourage thoroughly studying the issue to make sure we're clear on our, A, liabilities and B, overuse of that kind of tool in order to raise revenue. I mean, no one wants to, uh, cheapen Ferndale by throwing a Taco Bell sign, nothing wrong with Taco Bell, but up on every block, you know? So I, I think it requires further study, but that's the kind of, uh, you know, exploration and... and innovative thinking we need to think about to bring in some revenue.
Sherri Wells?
I've thoroughly read at least twice our sign ordinance, because in talking to some of the Ferndale businesses, I found that they're having problems with our sign ordinance being too restrictive. So, it's ironic that we're coming up with an issue about signs to enhance our revenues when our own businesses are having trouble having signs enough to be able to enhance their revenues, which will enhance our revenues. Being creative, yes. It's hard to beat what Mr. Lennon just said.
David Coulter?
I agree with that. You know, I like sports, and so, I grew up in hockey rinks and stadiums where advertising is everywhere. That doesn't offend me, I guess I'm sort of used to that, so I am absolutely open to that. But I do think there's a line that you can cross. The city came close to doing that recently, a few years ago, I remember there was some talk about having some advertising on the police cars. I don't think that's a good idea. I think that we want to make sure... (laughter) I mean, but we looked at it. I think you want to, you know, you want to make sure that there are certain things that are not, that don't look like they're bought and paid for by a private entity, and City Hall and our police cars and certain things are part of that. But advertising on a ball diamond or other selective advertising, I think, is a creative way to help raise revenue, and I would be open to it.
Raymond Willis?
Yeah, the government's local, state, federal especially, need to look outside the box to find other sources of revenue. With all the resources that the state of Michigan has, you'd think that government could make a ton of money. Ferndale has a very limited amount of city-owned space. Our parks are pristine. I can understand, as in the ballpark, but there's also a ton of private property, all kinds of opportunities to advertise on private property or commercial property. So, once again, it's a give or take, but I wouldn't want to see a whole lot of it. There's so many other ways to advertise.
Thank you. The next question will start with Dan Martin. Describe your efforts and positions on the downtown festivals.
You know, I think the downtown festivals are great. In fact, if you go back to the city survey that was distributed a few years ago, one of the most appealing things that citizens ranked was the downtown festivals. I think they bring people into Ferndale, they celebrate our community, they celebrate our diversity, and it's a great way to showcase the businesses and our talent that we have here in Ferndale as well. You know, they're temporary attractions that run through the summer. I'm always sensitive to residents' concerns, and I think that we need to balance that as well. But the downtown festivals are one of my favorite things about Ferndale, and I wouldn't give them up. They bring a lot of benefit to the city, they bring a lot of revenue to the city and the local businesses, and it's, to a great degree, what draws many people outside of Ferndale into the city during those summer months, so I'm supportive of them.
Sherri Wells?
When the news came down that the Pride Fest was moving to Hart Plaza, I thought, I am so proud of the fact that if it weren't for Ferndale, the only city that could have or would have hosted it, given it its start, it wouldn't have been moving. We started the Woodward Dream Cruise, which grew and grew. We are a festival incubator, and that is absolutely wonderful. I live downtown, I've also noticed that the festival, operation of those festivals are taking, we residents, us residents, more and more into consideration in terms of noise. I was pleased to read that the DIY is handling the recycling issue so well, and I hope that spreads around the country as other things that we have done here does do. So, the festivals are fine, and they're getting better, and I'm looking for the next new one that Ferndale starts. I think it's the Green Fair. We'll get that polished.
David Coulter?
Yeah, Ferndale is a city that takes its fun seriously. We like our festivals, it's part of our DNA, and I like them, too. They're one of my favorite things. But they're more than just the few days that the festival happens, and Dan referred to this. It helps market our city, it helps put us on the map, and I think those kinds of festivals can help us lead the region in an economic recovery, because they bring people to town, and these people look at our businesses, and they look at our houses, and they look at our schools, and they take a second look at Ferndale in a way that other cities don't have an opportunity. We do have to make sure that our festivals don't get out of hand, and I think we do a pretty good job of balancing that. So, on the whole, I love our festivals, and I hope we can, I hope the creativity comes... You know, it's not council that creates these, by the way. DIY was our friends over at WAB, and so, we have some really good creative people in town, and I look forward to the next great idea as well.
Raymond Willis?
Yes, a father of four young children, I'm always into something that's free and handy tanny. The recent DIY festivals, they took us two days to go through, and we really didn't even hardly touch on every booth that was there. It's close to home. I think that we should really take a look at what I call reverse tourism. We should advertise the city more for people to come here from around the state, just as Mackinac Island, per se, advertises all over the state for people to go there. I think it generates a lot of money for local businesses, and it definitely adds to a quality of life. You can look at some of the other local cities that have very little festivals, and at times, there's just nothing, it seems like the children are, nothing to do. I'm a big fan of revitalizing the state fair, and I'd like to see maybe a combination of events between the cities and the state, as far as that goes. Thank you.
Michael Lennon?
Oh, well, I think the festivals are wonderful. I love how it brings the community to a centralized area, and people can visit each other, and it brings out of counters in, and it's a good source of revenue for our local businesses and for the people that come and put up their exhibits, and I'm all in favor of them, I can't get enough of them. I think our event coordinator, Mr. Larry, our DDA, city hall staff, police, fire have... These festivals, as they have progressed, have done a fine job in fine-tuning it, where the strain on city resources is not that significant anymore, where it really has to come, you know, we really have to discuss these festivals. What we do is we just kind of find, look at the proposal that they bring to us, and we look it over, and then we approve or disapprove of it. So, I'm in favor of them, I want to continue, and I'd like to see more.
The next question will begin with Sherri Wells, and I'm going to combine several questions, and the timekeeper, if we could give them one and a half minutes for this round? The question is, how long have you lived in Ferndale? What do you do for a living, and for how long? And considering your occupation, do you have enough time to handle the commitment of all the meetings required of a sitting officer, member of the council?
I've lived in Ferndale only 23 years. I'm self-employed, as I said, that gives me a little too much leeway sometimes to do things that I find just so compelling, and that is a lot of the volunteer work. There have been periods where I have attended every city council meeting as regularly as the council members, four years when I was on the Charter Revision Commission, the last two years. I have a reputation for living frugally, which means that you have less income that you have to make to live the way we do, and that gives me the freedom, the choice, to do some of the things that I have done. And I'm a lawyer by profession, as well as public speaker and writer, and those are things that really help people focus, and that's a very, very important part of being a council member. Did that answer all five of those?
(laughter) David Coulter?
I think I mentioned that this is my 20th year living in Ferndale, very excited to be here. I've had a number of jobs. I was a public school teacher for a while, I was a draftsman for a while. For 13 years, I did corporate marketing and communications, and I did that up until a merger, and I left there and I ran for office in 2002, and I was the Oakland County Commissioner for eight years. I've been the mayor since January. I'm also a consultant, I do consulting in communications, marketing, and nonprofit... Oh, I do nonprofit work as well, I was the executive director of the Michigan AIDS Fund for two years. So, I've done a number of things. I'm very busy, but in terms of enough time to be mayor, well, I always say, if you want something done, find a busy person, because they're the ones that, they're the ones getting a lot of stuff done. I'm very active, I'm very busy, but I think I handle it all. The voters can tell me that in November, but I think I get to all the stuff I need to do. I enjoy this job a lot, it's the favorite thing, being mayor is the favorite of all the other stuff I get to do, so it's a privilege to be able to do. Thanks.
Raymond Willis?
Can you please repeat the question?
Okay. How long have you lived in Ferndale? What do you do for a living, and for how long? And considering the time commitments for the position, do you have adequate time to serve in office?
I was actually born in Ferndale, I've lived here six years. I own the Wai Island Construction Company, a corporation. At this point in time, I'm a stay-at-home father, I have a child who has Coffin-Lawrie Syndrome, he's five years old, he's very high-functioning. This gives me all the time during the day, because he'll be going to school soon to work for the city. I do work as a contract driver. It's a, I'm a pizza delivery driver, part-time right now, and that's where my main source of income is coming from, besides Richie's money, and Richie's my son. So, I've been kind of keeping that quiet, you know, the pizza delivery driver that wants to become mayor of a major inner-city. Well, yeah, I've been, I've owned restaurants, a incorporated restaurant, and been in the construction trades for 20 years now. And probably go back to maybe having a small business, I'm thinking about opening a hardware store, a general store. That's why I'm still saying incorporated, so that the corporation is functioning, obviously, with a name like the Wai Island. I had other things in mind originally when I became incorporated than just being in construction forever.
Michael Lennon?
Okay. President, I'm 55 years old, so give or take a couple of years, I've been here all my life, as well as my family. I retired in 2002 from the city of Ferndale, I'm currently employed by Garden Fresh Salza, and I also do some part-time work for Royal Public Schools. Do I have time? Yes, I have time. Unfortunately, that Royal Schools job was an opportunity I could not refuse, and it caused me to miss a couple of budget meetings. But it's something I had to do, it was something I could not turn down, it was just too beneficial for me. In the last eight years, yeah, I've made, I've missed two council meetings in eight years. Every board or commission I sit on, I seem to make it, I don't stop moving too often. I'm a little on the go most of the time, but yeah, I have time, and if not, I'll make time, as you serve the citizens. Thank you.
Dan Martin?
Thanks. My wife and I moved here seven years ago, and today, currently, I work as a Director of Physician Services and Communications at Blue Care Network of Michigan. I've been at that company in various roles for the past 12 years. Prior to that, I worked at another healthcare company, as well as worked for Electronic Data Systems in their customer services unit. Since we moved to Ferndale, I've been involved in a large number of community and nonprofit activities, and many of which are wrapping up due to term limits and other reasons. That does create a significant amount of time that, yes, I can be a city councilman and adequately engage the demands of that time. As far as my day job, I am very fortunate to work for a company that encourages participation in the community, and gives me the flexibility to be able to do both, get my day job done as well as be able to serve on city council.
The next question will go to David Coulter, and this will be the last general question before your closing remarks. What volunteer, unpaid volunteer work have you done for and in the community, and what groups and organizations are endorsing you?
You know, Ferndale's a great community if you want to volunteer, because we've got a lot of good, active groups to get involved in. I'm looking at Ann Heller with Fern Care, there's so many opportunities to do things here. And I did that, as soon as I moved here 20 years ago, I started joining things. I was, the first thing I was ever appointed to in a volunteer capacity was the, at the time, it was called the Senior Center Task Force with Jerry Kulik, which became the Community Center Task Force, because she was adamant that we make a community center, not just a senior center, and I served with Jerry Kulik for a number of years on that. I was a trustee on the Ferndale Library Board for a couple of years. I see Kevin Deegan Kraus was my chair at the time, that was a great experience. I've served on the board of Also, which is CSO, the community services organization that's right across the street. So, I've spent a lot of time giving back in volunteer capacities. None of those make endorsements, and I haven't asked them to, so I guess that part of the question is none of them, but I've been involved in a number, a number of organizations including those. Thank you.
Raymond Willis?
I've never been involved in doing volunteer work, until last August, when I stopped doing construction work. I've worked two jobs for probably the last 10 years. A lot of times, I work seven days a week, so it's very interesting to have some time off now. I guess about the only volunteer services, I maintain the vacant lot next to my house. They tore the house down there, and in the last two years, we've cleaned up the rubble, planted seed, I keep the card, I keep the, the children keep the sidewalk clean, so that's my public services. And it sometimes can take a lot of time to cut the grass and maintain a vacant lot like that.
Thank you. Michael Lennon?
Well, as volunteerism goes, I started out coaching youth baseball in Ferndale for approximately 10 years, although my son wasn't on the team. It was very time-consuming. Whenever it became an opening on the Parks and Rec Board prior to me being on council, I jumped at the opportunity. I've always been involved in Ferndale Goodfellows, and I'm a member of the Ferndale Arts, which is nothing but a charitable organization, and they do provide Christmas for the needy, and I'm involved in that. So, yeah, and by virtue of sitting on council, I think most of it, we volunteer a lot of our time to attend events and to sit up here a lot. I will never catch up to Dan Martin, and he's going to start laying out what he's involved in, and I hope one day I can achieve that level, but Dan, it's all you.
Dan Martin?
I really don't want to go now. Currently, I'm Chair of the Ferndale Community Foundation, and I've been proud to do that for the last three years, and I'm just finishing my last term there. I sit on the Board of Directors of Ferndale Youth Assistance, Michigan AIDS Coalition, and I sit on the Police and Fire Board for the city of Ferndale. Previously, I was able to serve on the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission, and from a volunteer perspective, I have the privilege of volunteering for Fern Care Free Clinic, Inc., particularly sitting on the Development Committee there. I volunteered for various community activities, including pub crawl, Blues Festival, Ferndale Pride, recently served, worked the beer tent for the Ferndale Education Foundation at DIY, as well as various church activities at St. John's.
And he played Santa Claus.
And I volunteer for the DDA, but that's not a secret, we're...
Sherri Wells?
Yeah.
Yes. I was volunteering at the Rotary Pancake Breakfast last ICE Festival, so I didn't get to see him play Santa Claus, but I will make sure I do this time, I heard he just did a great job. I volunteered for the Historical Society, I was doing publicity, and when they didn't have anything to publicize, I pulled together a kite day and worked with the Recreation Department, let them work with me for it. The 80th Birthday Party for the city of Ferndale, I initiated that and pulled that off, also with cooperation. I've been active with the schools, Spruce Up Days, Dream Cruise Art Fair, Block Club Network for a while, as long as it existed after I got into it, the DDA, I've attended all of their board meetings and many of their committees, and I've got some projects that I'm working on with them. The very newest one is Time Bank, which is something that will really help the sustainability of us as a community and as individual neighbors, as we invest the time to help each other get things done.
Thank you. And this concludes the time for the questions. The candidates will now be given one minute for a closing statement, and this will be in the reverse order, starting with Sherri Wells.
All right. I have a reputation, I'm proud of, in being someone who is information-oriented, gathering information, disseminating information, and I believe that that's something that we need much more of done from our city council and government, and from the residents to them, and with the businesses as well. I'm responsive, I'm persistent, I've had people use the word tireless for me, I plan... I'm responsive, I'm persistent, I've had people use the word tireless for me, I plan to sleep twenty-four hours on November ninth. And I've shown a, a great degree of dedication over all the twenty-three years that I've been here, and I don't plan to stop. Uh, I'd like to be on the council so that I can help it do more of what we can do, uh, to have a lot more cohesive community with the businesses and residents and the government. We can do that.
Dan Martin?
Thank you. Once again, I really want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here today. Um, I also want to thank my fellow candidates for stepping up and putting themselves forward for service to the community. Um, as anyone who's done this, and we've well learned this year, running for office is, is more than a notion, and takes a lot of commitment and love for this city, which I believe everyone up here has. Um, I also want to thank the residents of Ferndale for making this a city that I can call home. My wife and I moved here seven years ago, but really, it's the people in this city that made us lay down our roots, and I want to thank you all for that, because it's very important. You are the best, and I'm very proud to call all of you neighbors. On November eighth, I respectfully ask for your support. A vote for Dan Martin is a vote that will elect someone who will responsibly represent you on this council. Thank you very much.
Michael Lennon?
Thank you. Um, I can sit up here and tell you about eight years of, of service on council, sitting on all the boards of commission, and it's given me a lot, a great deal of experience. But, setting that aside, I, I think that my commitment and my longevity to Ferndale, um, would earn me a third term on council. Um, I have come, uh, come to, I come to the table every day as an independent thinker, uh, make my decisions on my own, no hidden agendas, um, I, I get a lot, my colleagues and I, I, I think we got a cohesive environment. I love the diversity and the community involvement and the citizen involvement at Ferndale, and public service is all I've ever known, and I want to continue doing so for the residents and business owners of Ferndale for the next four years. Thank you.
Raymond Willis?
I guess this all started, uh, at the end of last summer, when, uh, my children sat and watched the fairgrounds being empty, and my children told me, "Is there anything that you can do?" And I'm like, "Yeah, I'm Superman, I can make the State Fair come back again." And I looked into it, uh, quite extensively this winter, and as a, as Ray as the individual, I ran into a brick wall. I've been interested in, uh, running for mayor ever since I moved here, when, um, Kobe ran, uh, unopposed, and then I saw how much the job paid and how much I was making at the time. But I want to go back to saying that, um, I want to bring some interest to the state to revitalize the fairgrounds. Uh, I think it's a, uh, big cultural and, uh, financial loss for everybody. The state needs to take a better look at Eight Mile and at Detroit, especially around the fairgrounds. It's going to be a transportation hub when the, um, people move, I don't want to call people who move, but when they get the tram coming through, I'm Woodward, and I think it's just a big loss for everybody.
Thank you. David Coulter?
Uh, thank you. You know, it's a, it's a huge privilege and responsibility to be elected by your fellow neighbors and citizens to elect, to represent them in government, and it, and it's something that I take seriously and work hard at every single day for the last nine years. It's been my honor to do this job. There's maybe no harder time in my lifetime to be in a job like this. The financial difficulties that we've seen over the last decade have been unprecedented since the Great Depression. Uh, I like to think that my experience, six years on the Finance Committee in Oakland County, helping to balance budgets there, that, that experience that I've brought here, uh, the budgeting practices that I've tried to help implement with my colleagues on council here, I hope have made a difference to begin to lay a foundation for our financial success. We do a lot of things right in Ferndale. We do events right, uh, we've done downtown right, but we've got to get our finances right if we're going to have long-term success in Ferndale, and I think I've been able to contribute to that, and I hope the residents will allow me to continue to do that after November eighth.
Thank you all. Well, this concludes our forum. The League of Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, and WFRNTV for making this forum possible. Further nonpartisan information will be available on these candidates if you would just check out our Le, the League website and our voter guide at www.lwva.org. And this program can be seen on WFRN, which is channel ten on WOW and channel seventeen on Comcast. This will be broadcast every day at six AM and noon, and six PM and midnight until the election. It is also being livestreamed and available, um, online at ferndale-mi.com. And if you missed that, the information will also be available on the League website. And we would like to again thank everyone, and for your contributions, and for your concern for the businesses and citizens of the community, and remind everyone that our membership is open, if you're interested in participating, learning more about the League. The membership, um, is open to both men and women over the age of eighteen, and we, I want to remind you that the deadline to register to vote for the upcoming election is Tuesday, October eleventh, and remember, please, to vote on November eighth. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you. (applause)
One down, what do we got? I think we got, we're going to do a two one, uh, yeah, then, yeah.